Okay, no problem.
Michelle got her ticket.
Thank you, Tom. You push my kid and I love it. We good? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 18th, 2017 City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting, regular City Council Meeting of October 18th, 2017. And could I please, could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Chief, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney.
Freya. Johnson Santos. Lewis. Silveira. Walto.
Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
Move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Silveira?
A second.
Motion by Freya, second by Silveira to approve the agenda stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Presentation, Proclamation Recognizing Cancer Awareness Month. And could I have all the Fire Department come forward, please? Come on front. Thank you so much for what you've done, year after year after year. I'll give you time to explain. Let me read the proclamation, then I'd like the spokesperson to explain exactly what the Cancer Awareness Month is all about and what you've done for the raising of funds for that project through the t-shirts. Proclamation Recognizing Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, in 2016, about 1,685,210 new cancer cases are expected to be diagnosed, and approximately 595,690 Americans are expected to die from cancer, making cancer the second most common cause of death in the United States, according to nearly one out of every four deaths in America. And Cancer Awareness Month emphasizes the importance and prevention and early detection through health screenings, as well as the promotion of a healthy lifestyle, including proper diet, exercise, and the smoke-free environment. Whereas, Cancer Awareness Month honors the memory of those who have lost, that we have lost, supports those who are still fighting cancer, and celebrates the survivors who inspire us through their strength and courage. And whereas, the City of Los Vanos recognizes the month of October as Cancer Awareness Month, a time to join together to battle all cancers, to raise awareness, and to send a message that ending all cancers must be a national health priority. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Mayor and the City Council Members of Los Vanos do hereby proclaim October as Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Los Vanos, and ask the citizens of Los Vanos to wear pink in an effort to raise awareness, to celebrate survivors, and to encourage those in treatment of cancer. And again, thank you so much. And who's going to be the spokesperson?
Thank you all, especially the City Council, and for having us up here. First of all, I'd like to thank Rochelle and Mary Lou for their participation in this and helping decide to get this word out and helping us out with the orders. Also, Josh Hiddick Hammer's mom, Sign Solutions, with making the shirts. You folks have probably seen them around town, beautiful-looking shirts. And every year, we're trying to get a new design, new way of showing our support for this cause. That's a great cause. This year, we, I think we sold about 500, we sold shirts, 126 more than last year. So we raised about $10,000, $60 worth of money. That money, in the beginning years, it used to go back to Fresno for Pink Hills, but after last year, we got to find out that this money gets to stay locally. So we did use it last year to some folks here going through the afflictions of cancer. This year, this money will stay here again. It may not be a lot that we give to these families, but it's a little alleviation to them, for them to breathe. So every little bit helps. So that's where this money's going, and it'll stay to families here in town to help everybody out. I also like to thank all the departments that bought shirts, the departments here in Los Vinos, Police Department, Council, everybody Public Works, everybody in the united fight for this. Also, for any of the school districts, different schools that campaigned around us also, but most importantly, all the citizens of Los Vinos. Thank you for everything. Thank you for helping us out. And next year, make a bigger push for the next year coming up. Thank you.
The true meaning of community spirit. Thank you all so much. Let's go on to Item 6, Public Forum. Members of the public may address a City Council Member on any items of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and your city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, would you please place them on vibrate or turn them off? Is there anyone who would like to speak at the City Council or the public forum? Oh, come on forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Staff. My name is John Fulton, and resident in Los Vanos, 25 years. And I'd like to thank the staff, the patient especially. The Public Works Department responded to my request about bicycle safety. And at the street level, the staff workers working on these projects did respond and have repaired some of the bike hazards. I was told by your staff, though, that we were going to save some money. My suggestion was we stop painting the bike lanes, because the bike lanes do not satisfy the state requirement for bike lanes. Bike lanes are to be continuous, and if you don't have continuous, you need to have a Category 3 bike way, which is a bike route for continuity. Without that, you don't have a bike lane, you don't have a bike system, you don't have a bike path. So you need to have a bike route. The bike route provides a continuity. So if you're painting those lines as of January 1st this year, the new law says that we've got to have from the edge of the gutter, not the edge of the curb, but the edge of the gutter, where you have parking, you've got to have 13 feet. And you're painting the lines too close. In addition to that, you need, to the left of that, you need three additional feet. You need 16 feet from the edge of the gutter. And right now, you're painting the lines only about 11 and 1/2 feet, 11 feet. So I was told by the staff, Public Works staff, last week that the painting was finished, and I saw that today you're still painting. So, Mr. Mayor, I know that you want to take care of graffiti, so we can save the money for paint for the bike lane painting, and put that towards paint for the graffiti. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we'll go on to Item 7, Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council Member. Tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 207100 through 207324, in the amount of $1,380,245.50. Minutes for the October 4th, 2017 City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5901, authorizing entering into a facility use agreement between the City of Los Vanos and the Los Vanos Golden Age Club for rental of the community grand room in the amount of $460 a month. City Council Resolution Number 5902, adopting a revised budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year, as it pertains to expenditures in the Fire Department Vehicle Repair and Maintenance Account, 100-422-100-216, in the amount of $13,435. City Council Resolution Number 5903, approving closure of non-essential city offices on Tuesday, December 26, 2017, and Tuesday, January 2, 2018. City Council Resolution Number 5904, accepting public improvements which have been substantially completed for lots 1 through 13, fronting North Street, and lots 14 through 19, fronting Wilmot Avenue of Harvest Grove, tract number 2013-01. Any items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any City Council Member who wishes to remove an item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Freya, to approve the consent agenda stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item 8, Public Hearing. If you challenge or propose action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of an amendment to Title IX, Chapter 3, Article 28 of the Los Vanos Municipal Code relating to signs. Community and Economic Development Director Elms will be making the presentation. And Item 8A1, Ordinance Number 1158, amending Title IX, Chapter 3, Article 28 of the Los Vanos Municipal Code relating to signs. This is the first reading and introduction, and Planning Director Elms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. So just a little bit of background on this particular item. As you may recall, back in July of this year, the City Council directed staff to prepare an amendment to our existing sign ordinance. But we were tasked with a focus on certain areas. One was to establish a process for minor adjustments, and then also to create specific regulations for automobile dealerships. And then we were to look at temporary signage. So the purpose of this amendment before you tonight has three goals. The first is to allow the Community and Economic Development Director to consider over-the-counter relief for minor adjustments to the sign ordinance. It, two, provides additional signage for automobile dealerships as their display area is primarily outdoors. And three, that it would modify temporary sign provisions to meet the original intent of the sign ordinance. So the first item is sign alterations and minor adjustments. And with this amendment to the sign ordinance, this would allow the Community and Economic Development Director to grant minor adjustments to prevent unnecessary hardships. The way that the code is written now, it would require any alteration, any adjustment to the sign ordinance to require a conditional use permit. So that requires a public hearing. It's a timely and costly process to go before the Planning Commission through a public hearing and see whether you'll get approved or not through the Planning Commission. It's their discretionary approval. Through this particular adjustment, it would be demonstrated that an exception is necessary. So not just anybody can get relief through this minor adjustment. It need to be demonstrated. There would still be discretion to, by the Director, to require a conditional use permit if the Director deems it is necessary. Sign area can be adjusted to a limit of 25%. An example of this would be wall signage. So say they just, when we run across this issue many times with corporate franchises, they have specific sign sizes, and those are the sizes that corporate makes their signage, but it doesn't necessarily fit into our one-to-one ratio for a highway commercial business. They may just need a minor relief, but it requires them to go through a conditional use permit process. And if, in this, the way that our proposal is before you tonight, if it's a minor adjustment of no more than 25%, it could be done through the Director of the Department. It also allows for a 25% increase in sign height. This would apply for monument signs or pole signs. The max height limit right now is 20 feet, and 25% would just be an additional five feet max. So that would be a very minor adjustment that they would be eligible for if they can demonstrate that it is necessary. Also, transfer of sign area. This would be if there are certain limitations. For instance, if a particular parcel is narrow, has very limited frontage on the street, but it has a lot of depth, they could transfer what would be signage permitted on one elevation, they could transfer it to the elevation facing the street, so they have more visibility. And then also provides for alternative sign locations and types of signs. And all of that specific criteria is even further described within the staff report and included in the proposed ordinance. So automobile dealerships is a new category that was created with this particular amendment. Prior to this amendment, automobile dealerships had no specific relief. They had to follow the same rules as every other commercial business. But the city staff did feel that it was reasonable to allow dealerships to have more signage, as they are particular, most particularly, they're outdoors, and they don't have indoor signage to be able to advertise. So it's broken down into various types of signage. The first one is pole banners. These are vertical fixed panels that are affixed to a pole. They're only allowed one per permanent pole, or two directly opposite of each other, so back-to-back on one pole. It cannot exceed 60 square feet in total area. They have to have a vertical clearance of eight feet. That's from the ground. They're not to exceed above the light pole, and they need to be located on private property and outside of the vision triangles. And they're not permitted off-site or on public utility poles. The second is snow cones, or fan display pole banners. This would allow for one display on one permanent light pole. They're not to exceed 13 feet in height and six feet in width. They cannot exceed above the light pole. Their vertical clearance would start at four feet, as these light poles, the snow cones, they're tapered at the bottom and then they flare out. So they could start at four feet, and then as they taper out, that would be acceptable. And they just need to be on private property and cannot be outside of the vision triangles. And they're not permitted off-site or on public utility poles as well. And then the third is flags, and these are for non-governmental flags. This would be a flag that is on a flag pole, but is not the American flag or, say, our state flag. And the criteria here is that they would be no more than 24 square feet in area per flag, no more than one flag per permanent light standard or pole. They need to be located on private property outside the vision triangles, and they're not permitted off-site or on public utility poles. And then banner, feather, or teardrop flags are prohibited for automobile dealerships. The next category is portable signs. These are A-frame and I-frame signs that are reader boards. Currently, right now, in our code, the existing language, which is not being changed, is that they can be located within the public right-of-way if directly in front of a business with a minimum of four-foot clearance while business is open. So when the business closes, say at 5:00 p.m., those temporary signs need to be inside of the business. They're not allowed to be located outside, displayed. And the four-foot clearance, this is particularly useful in the downtown area where we have extra-wide sidewalks. Our sidewalks downtown are about 11 feet wide. This allows for that four-foot clearance and for an A-frame or I-frame sign. And our commercial areas as well, our commercial standard is larger than four feet. Four feet minimum is a residential standard sidewalk. So typically, though, in a highway commercial business, you typically have a sidewalk, and then a landscape planner, and then the parking lot starts. And the downtown, they don't have that same luxury. So this is beneficial for downtown, whereas on the highway, we typically don't have an issue with clearance. So the new language that is provided in this amendment does require that A-frame and I-frame signs cannot exceed 36 inches by 24 inches in all zoning districts. The old language in the existing sign ordinance has a much larger A-frame and I-frame size requirement. And then it says, except in the highway commercial zoning district, where there is no size requirement was necessary. So this does require an even playing field for all zoning districts, and it also puts a maximum size requirement, where we've seen businesses take advantage of that exception in the highway commercial zoning district. So these are examples. Just wanted to make it clear, I often get questions of what is an A-frame sign, what is an I-frame sign? To the left is an A-frame sign. Those are sandwich boards. They're shaped as an A. And then to the right, that's an I-frame sign, also known as, some folks call those H-frame signs. But they're stuck into the ground, they're temporary, they're not to be used as permanent signage. So temporary signs, this is another area of the sign ordinance that we've addressed. First is that banana flags, feather flags, and teardrop flags are prohibited. So they will not be allowed within our proposed sign ordinance amendment. They're to be displayed for a maximum of 10 consecutive days, four times each calendar year, with a minimum of 40 days apart. Currently, right now, our existing sign ordinance allows for temporary signage to be displayed for 30 days, four times a year, and does not have the stipulation that it has to have a time period in between. So we have businesses abusing this that have been displaying their temporary signage for 120 days straight. But the intent of the code is to allow this type of signage for a special sale or a seasonal event that is going on. So with this stipulation, we are bringing the intent of the code back into temporary signs, what it was designed for. They also need to be located on private property, not to exceed 25 feet from the ground, and not to extend above the roof line. I also want to specify that temporary signs within the code are defined as wind-blown devices as well as banners. So when we're talking about being allowed to be displayed for 10 consecutive days, those are wind-blown devices that are attention-getters, and also banners.
Those things that are with a fan on the bottom and they blow up?
Yes, those are wind-blown devices, and that would be, they're attention-getters, and they would be required to follow the criteria of the not to exceed 25 feet from the ground. And that's why that, that particular requirement was written.
Okay. Ms. Silveira?
Stacy, on the 10 consecutive days, four times each calendar year, when, in the beginning of the presentation, you talked about the Community and Economic Development Director having some flexibility. So let's say, for example, someone was having a two-week closing sale. Is that something that you could see being, that they could be able to come to you for relief? You know, again, it's the 10 days they're going out of business, they say, we're going to do it for two weeks. Is that something that you would be able to say, okay, in this circumstance, that makes sense, I could give you 14 days? Or that's not part of it?
No, that wouldn't fall under the hardship of the minor alteration. That would require a conditional use permit to get that extra signage.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Ms. Lewis, I'm sorry.
Did you have something?
Sure, I was just going to finish the slide, but if you have a question.
Well, I'll let you finish the slide, and then I'll ask the question.
Okay. So just continuing on temporary signs, it's allowed one wind-blown device for every 50 feet, excuse me, of street frontage, and one banner, no closer than 10 feet to another banner, and they're allowed a maximum of 30 square feet in size. And then also, the Community and Economic Development Director reviews temporary signage and approves them, and may also impose conditions. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 27, 2017, and at the end of the meeting, recommended approval of the proposed sign ordinance amendment to Las Vanas City Council. No public comment. Public hearing notice was published in the Las Vanas enterprise, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1158, amending Title IX, Chapter III, Article 28 of the Las Vanas Municipal Code relating to signs, and also motion to continue the public hearing to November 1, 2017. And that concludes my presentation.
Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stacy, on the, one of the things that I noticed down on our Boulevard is that I've seen makeshift A-frame signs that people make on their own with two-by-fours and large pieces of plywood, and they paint the information on the handmade sign themselves as to what they're trying to advertise. And I would like to see some language in here for the portable signs to identify the type of material that can be used, or the type of material that can't be used for making those signs. Actually, I saw a little commercial on television today. It was the advertisement of a downtown area, and someone had an A-frame sign that was made of wood, but it was a professionally-made sign with a chalkboard on it, and it was stained, and it looked appropriate. But to have somebody go to Home Depot or a hardware store, buy two-by-fours and some plywood, nail it together, and prop it up and handwrite, paint a sign, and use it as an A-frame, to me, is not acceptable. So right now, apparently, we don't have anything in our ordinance for A- or I-frames that will tell the public or business owners that they can't use these type of materials. So I think it's important for us to identify it now rather than let it become a problem so that we don't have people coming back to the Planning Commission saying, well, you know, I'm within the size specification, but there's nothing in your ordinance that says what the materials can be. So that's, that's one thing I'd like to see. And also, I know we had an issue in the past, a couple of years ago, where I think our city manager directed our Planning Department to send out letters to all businesspeople indicating what our sign ordinance was. And I think with the importance of this going forward, that we, we need to do the same thing this time, is mail letters out to our business owners in town to let them know what the new ordinances are in regards to signs. So I'm not quite sure how to construct that language in regards to the A-frame signs and the materials to be used. Does anybody have any suggestions? I just don't want someone to go and buy plywood and two-by-fours and make a sign and stick it out there.
Sure. So the city attorney and I have researched various materials that are used for A-frame and I-frame signs, and what we saw pretty consistent is that language from other cities that do require durable material, all-weather material, some cities also require a digital print, required that they be of a digital print. We could exempt chalkboards from that because those are handwritten, and those are, are unique and typically are for sales and just letting patrons know what's going on with certain businesses. So we could include within temporary signs, language that requires it be of durable material and that it's, it's all-weather material and requires a digital print. Should that be acceptable? And we could exempt chalkboards from that.
When you say digital print, exactly, how does that, you're talking about, I guess, if they are going to have a sign made that, are you saying that it has to be a digital print that's put on the, on the sign board?
On durable material, I think.
On durable material, so that it's professionally done, it's not hand-painted.
Okay, all right.
See, they could buy a plastic A-frame, like she showed, and then they could buy a sign out of durable material. And then that part could be hung on the A-frame sign, and one is durable material and the other one is durable material. So the sign can be changed, and then that, that stops the bucket of paint and the fiberboard.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't know the terminology of, and thank you for clearing that up, Mr. Mayor, of the two, the two terms. Okay. That's reasonable for me.
Okay. Ms. Silveira?
Stacy, just quickly, on the last part of your presentation, it said that the Community and Economic Director will review and approval is required for all temporary signs, wind-blown devices, and banners, and may impose reasonable conditions. So if you fall within the rules that we've set forward, you still have to get permission?
Not for an A-frame or I-frame sign. Those are exempt. And as long as you're following the rules of putting it back in at the end of the day, and you're following the size requirements, no approval is needed from the Community and Economic Development Director. The only approval needed is for wind-blown devices and banners.
Okay. I, that was just, I guess I misunderstood that I thought that they had for anything they had to get approval, and that just seems like we're adding a bunch more work. But that's specifically directed toward the wind-blown devices and banners. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, so I would now like to open up the public hearing and invite the public to comment on ordinance number 1158. Is there anyone who wishes to do so?
I'm John Fulton from Las Vanas, and I'm confused by what I'm hearing. So part of my prior life was in visual interpretive materials. So we use die-cut vinyl, which is a semi-permanent material for signs, and the die-cut vinyl could be from something that's hand-drawn. So the terminology you're using is ambiguous and does not relate to the business of signs. So if you can have a hand-painted drawing, and it's done by a professional artist, you take a digital print of that, but it's hand-painted. So hand-painting and digital is not mutually exclusive. Die-cut vinyl, you can take whatever you want, and you put it into a computer to cut out letters with die-cut vinyl. So the terms that you're using are not those terms used in the business. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum, or the public hearing? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and if, are there any more comments? Ms. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, to that last question, I, that makes sense that, you know, you, there's certain logos that they were, it was a hand-drawn logo. So just, I guess, as long as that language is clear, does a professional sign, does that clear up that it could be, you know, you got a cursive hand logo, and it came originally from a hand, you know, handwriting that was transposed over and made into a professional sign? As long as the language that's in there doesn't conflict, does that make sense, Stacy?
Yes.
I think that, that a person wouldn't be punished, penalized for, you know...
All art originated from someplace.
Exactly.
Okay. All art originated from someplace. What we're talking about is professionally-made sign on durable materials. And, and if that included an original work of art, then that's fine. Stacy, am I reading that right?
Yeah, that's the intent.
Yeah. As an art major, all artwork originated from somewhere, from someone's brain, and then it was just transferreded to, to digital media. And, and so that does not stop any of that and does not preclude anyone from putting an original work of art on the sign if they want to.
Perfect. And then, so just really quickly, Mayor, if I may, I want to thank staff, Stacy, and the city attorney, Mr. Vaughn. I know that this was an item that I had brought forward, you know, and I'm glad that you guys took the opportunity to clean up some other stuff in the sign ordinance. One of the things being that you, you know, you made the A-frame signs equal across the board. I think that makes it a lot easier for code enforcement to enforce because now the rules are, are the same for everybody. And I do appreciate the time that was taken to make a carve-out for automobile, automobile dealerships. I do think that they are, they're an important part of our local economy, and I think that, you know, we, they ought to be treated a little bit differently. And so, and I feel that this is, doesn't go overboard. It addresses those issues that I had brought forward, and, you know, some folks might not be too happy that we're getting rid of the banana flags. They're not my favorite. I think they're tacky at best. Maybe on the first couple of weeks that they bring them out, they look really nice and fresh, but then they're designed to get slammed around by the wind. In Las Vanas, we get that afternoon breeze every day, and after two, three weeks, a month of them being out there, they, they go to shambles pretty quickly, and some places don't choose to change them out. So I'm happy with everything that you guys have brought forward in this ordinance, and I thank you for all the time on it.
Yes, also, that, you know, it was, it was important that when this came up, I think the council wanted everything looked at, and to make sure it was fair across the board. Carving out a deal for one person gets people mad, but when you look at everything like you did, to make everything fair across the board, it's a lot better. If there's a problem, we need to fix something, let's fix everything and not just for one issue. So I'm happy that that got done. If there are no other comments, Mrs. Lewis, did you want to, I want to allow you to make the motion because you had a change in the wording, and I think Mr. Vaughn and Stacy have already come up with some language. So let's go to Mr. Vaughn first. Let's go to Stacy? Okay. Let's go ahead, and then if it answers your question, Mrs. Lewis, you can include that in your motion. Okay?
Okay. So under temporary signs, we're proposing to include language that says that, excuse, under A-frame signs, yes, under portable signs, A-frame and I-frame signs, that the language be included that says that shall be proficient, professionally-designed sign of durable materials. Anything else that you...
Okay. All right. Mrs. Lewis, did you want to make a motion with that inclusion?
With that inclusion, and I'd also like to include in the motion that letters be sent out to our business community in regards to the changes in our, in our ordinance, as we did in the past, so that everyone's, understands...
Aware of the changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Vaughn?
So you can do that, but I would suggest you do our normal procedure by waiving the first reading with the additional language, introducing the ordinance, and then your request would go at adoption of the ordinance. We don't even know if the ordinance will be adopted at the next public hearing, so you can make that motion at that time.
Okay, Stacy, could you make a note of that so that, you know, in case I forget, it could be brought up?
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So motion by Mrs. Lewis as stated in the language...
I have to make it first.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh, I thought you did. Okay, make the motion.
So I'm introducing the first reading.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to introduce...
Waive the first reading with amended language.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, for ordinance number 11858...
To waive the first...
To waive the first reading and introduce the new language in regards to A-frame and I-frame signs. Is that correct, Mr. Vaughn?
Okay, so the steps are to...
Yes, so on...
Steps would be, would be to waive the first reading with the inclusion of the new language as stated by the Community and Economic Development Director.
Then your move for the introduction?
That would be by simple motion, and then the second would be to introduce as stated.
Roll call rule.
Okay. So I'll start again. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1158 with the inclusion of the new language as indicated by our staff, and to waive the first reading.
Okay, in reference to A-frame signs in professional durable material.
In reference to A-frame signs...
Is that correct?
I think, I think with him saying including staff, recommendation would cover that.
Okay. Do I have a second? Ms. Silveira?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Lewis with the inclusion, second by Silveira. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1158 as read by title. Is that correct, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Silveira?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Silveira for the introduction of ordinance number 1158. And Director Maloney, roll call.
For real?
Yes.
Johnson Santos? Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Colton?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Okay, number nine, professional services agreement and budget amendment for the City of Las Vanas general plan update. Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pretty excited about this particular item.
Oh, boy, I'm telling you, I'm off tonight with this, sorry. There, try that one.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So we're pretty excited about this particular item. So first off, our general plan serves as our guiding framework for all future development in the City of Las Vanas. It is our single most important planning document, and it also serves as the constitution for future development. It's required under state planning law, and under state planning law, our general plan has to consist of seven mandatory elements. It's required to have land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, noise and safety, and then any other optional elements as the city chooses. And all cities and counties in California are required by law to have a general plan. The last time that the City of Las Vanas updated our general plan, that was adopted in 2009, and the current general plan, the data that was... in 2009, and the current general plan, the data that was used was collected and analyzed in about 2005, 2006. General plans are long-term projects, they're also long-range projects. And so, that is typical to start a general plan with its basis, and in this instance, it was 2005, 2006, which was during our housing boom, and those projections were based on that housing boom. It was adopted in 2009, and what we are experiencing and what we have experienced with the Great Recession is significant economical and technological changes. And with that, we are proposing a general plan update as we have determined it is necessary to refine the concepts within our existing general plan that's become outdated, and then respond to new legislative requirements to ensure that our general plan is legally sound. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joanna Jensen from Placeworks. The city went through a process of a request for proposal. We sent out this request and asked for qualified agents to respond, to provide a proposal for a general plan update and an accompanying environmental impact report. We went, we received six proposals, and we went through an interview process and staff selected Placeworks. Now, I am going to turn it over to Joanna, who's going to explain what Placeworks is going to do for Los Banos.
Thank you so much, Stacy. It's great to be here. I'm very excited to be here tonight. I've shared with Stacy how much myself and the rest of the team at Placeworks is looking forward to working in Los Banos. It means a lot to me to be able to work in communities like this where you obviously have so much pride and such a powerful sense of community as we already saw here tonight. And I'm really excited to be underway with the general plan update. Before I introduce myself and Placeworks in more detail, I wanted to talk a little bit about what we understand your goals to be for the general plan update, because I see throughout this process that our role is really to help you articulate and express and refine what you see as your vision of Los Banos. So, we want to build on the strengths of, oh, sorry, I forgot to put that, thank you. We want to build on the strengths of the 2009 general plan. As Stacy mentioned, a lot of things have changed since that document was prepared and adopted, but there's some good stuff in there. There's talk about balanced growth, neighborhoods centered around gathering places, safe streets where people can bike and walk, healthy air, so a lot of good ideas that I imagine that we're going to preserve, but some new things that we need to address and reflect. And we're not only going to update your general plan, but we're going to be focused from the beginning on the implementation of that general plan. We understand that one of the primary goals here is to see some economic development, some economic diversification that's going to be embodied not only in the general plan, but in a series of implementing documents that we're going to go ahead and prepare as part of this same contract and at the same time as we're doing the general plan update, so that when we end the general plan, you're left with not only an up-to-date general plan that looks forward into the future, but also three different plans that are going to start you towards actually seeing some on-the-ground changes as a result of the general plan process that we're starting. So, that will include a new economic development strategy, a new plan for your downtown, and also some planning for your business park and employment park areas, all of which are closely related to the goals of bringing jobs and having a thriving local economy. So, again, we see you as the experts on Los Banos, and we want to take advantage of that expertise throughout. We see ourselves as the experts on general plans. As a firm, I think Placeworks has prepared more general plans than any other single planning firm in California. We've worked all over the state. We just recently gave the state guidance on their new general plan guidelines. They've just come out a few weeks ago, so there's going to be a valuable resource for Los Banos as you update your general plan. And not only do we have general plan expertise, but we are also have in-house expertise in community engagement and facilitation, whether that's facilitating individual meetings, even inter-agency coordination with some of the other jurisdictions here around Los Banos, as well as engaging your community. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, which I'm sure you're familiar with, which requires us to do environmental review of the general plan and the associated plans that I mentioned. We have in-house urban designers and GIS specialists that are really going to be important support for this effort. So, both a depth and a breadth of experience that's going to be very relevant. In addition, we have a team member, BAE Urban Economics, Matt Cota, couldn't be here tonight, committed to a council meeting in another community, but they're going to be a crucial team member, so I wanted to introduce them briefly. They are an urban economics firm. They have been working for over 2,000 clients across the country since 1986. Matt Cota is going to lead this work from offices in Davis. They also have offices in Berkeley, Los Angeles, and on the East Coast in Washington, D.C. and New York City. And I have worked closely with Matt and with others at BAE on a number of past general plan projects, including work in Stockton, Tulare, Vacaville, Morgan Hill, and Livermore on general plan updates and economic development strategies similar to what we'll be doing here in Los Banos. We have worked, both BAE and Placeworks, as I alluded to, have worked extensively in the Central Valley, and again, I really do enjoy working here. Central Valley has incredible natural beauty, warm, welcoming, hard-working community members, and just incredible potential. So, it's really a pleasure to have another opportunity to add to our Central Valley experience. I wanted to introduce you to a few of the faces that you'll be seeing as we work together over the next couple of years. That's me on the top. I'll be the principal in charge. I'm an associate principal with Placeworks. I've been with my firm since 1999, and over that time, I've worked on over a dozen general plans from, in communities as diverse as Palo Alto and Avonale, both are two places that I'm working right now. And for most of those general plans, I've also done the EIR. So, you'll be having me manage both your general plan and your environmental impact report document on that general plan, which creates a lot of efficiencies. Charlie Knox, right under me, is going to be a senior advisor. He works with me in our East Bay office, and he has over 25 years of experience. He's working right now on the Stockton general plan. He just recently completed the Vallejo general plan, and he also has experience working as a public sector planning director. So, he brings a valuable perspective as well. Carrie Stone will be our day-to-day project manager and make sure that everything keeps running smoothly. She's a native of Visalia, and she's worked with me on general plans in Tulare, Avonale, Corcoran, and we recently completed a successful general plan update in Morgan Hill. And then finally, there's Matt Cota at the bottom from BAE, who I mentioned earlier. Matt also grew up in the Central Valley and again, has extensive experience with similar projects. In addition to the folks on this slide, I'll also just mention that we have in-house senior-level expertise in, I already mentioned, our urban design, but we also have transportation planners and an in-house SEQA attorney, again, to help us with the trickier points of the EIR. So, this slide shows you our project schedule. We're going to, we're planning for about a two-and-a-half-year process. That is very reasonable. That'll be a pretty efficient process. A lot of these plans take three years or even longer, so this represents a commitment to getting things done. And the important, two important points I want to make on this slide, I know it's a little bit hard to read this level of detail, but those little orange and, oh, it doesn't show it there, the little orange and blue stars that you see are check-ins with the planning commission and with the city council. So, you can see that we are planning to be checking in with you regularly. There's one of those on almost every single task on this schedule. And the other important point is that, that really long bar that you see about two-thirds of the way down is what we call in the implementation tasks. That's where we have those three plans, including the economic development strategy, the downtown plan, and the business park plans. In discussions with your Community and Economic Development Director, since we proposed, we've heard that that's really a priority for you. We want to hit the ground running on those tasks. And so, that bar has been moved up to show that we're proceeding with that in parallel to the general plan update tasks and getting that going really pretty soon here in the process. So, before I close, I just wanted to touch briefly on our community engagement philosophy. Engagement is a very important cornerstone of all of our work at Placeworks because we really believe that a plan cannot be successful if it's developed from the top down. It doesn't make sense for us to go away behind closed doors, even though we are experts, and write a plan and then hand it to you and have you adopt it. That's not going to go anywhere. So, we want your community to be informed and aware and have the opportunity to participate in making a rich, successful, and enduring plan. At the same time, we realize that folks here in Los Banos work very hard. They, a lot of them have long commutes, a lot of them have a lot of other commitments here in the community, and it's not really reasonable for us to have a meeting and expect them to come to us. We want to go to where they are, and we want to offer them a lot of opportunities to get involved without having to spend their valuable time sitting through PowerPoint presentations. So, we have a project website. We have online tools that folks can use from their mobile devices or from their home computer. Whenever they have a few minutes, they can log on and give us some feedback. We're planning to center our face-to-face outreach around a community event, might be timed with another event that you already have going on here in the community, and we'll have a booth there or a table. We'll have maps or exercises or some way for people to get involved hands-on and to learn more about the process. And that's how I see us really engaging the community rather than having meetings where they could talk to and really the burden is on them to participate. In addition to that, we have a couple of different stakeholder groups planned for the economic development effort, for the downtown plan effort, to make sure that we're taking advantage, again, of the local knowledge that's here in the community, and we're listening to you and to the local experts when we're devising these plans. And then, as I already showed, we have multiple check-ins with the planning commission and the city council throughout the process to make sure that we're staying on track and to get your direction when we're at key decision points in the project. Finally, because I know it is a community priority, I just want to say a little bit about our preliminary vision for economic development. And again, this is not too fully fleshed out yet because we haven't heard from you yet, we haven't talked to the stakeholders yet, and we want to leave a lot of room for you to shape what this is going to be. But preliminarily, we know that by 2024, there are projected to be over 10,000 additional new jobs in Merced County. And those include jobs in education and healthcare, hospitality, and construction, a whole range of fields, and there's no reason why some of those jobs can't be here in Los Banos. So, we want to help you find opportunities for folks who live here now to be able to work here and stay here in the community for their own sake, for their family's sake, and for the economic diversification, and that can represent for the city and for the fiscal health, that can represent for the city. So, Los Banos has a lot of strengths and assets already going for it, and we're going to be the most successful when we can recognize those and build on those. You're the primary urban hub on this side of the county. You're close to I-5. You've already got strong linkages, both historic and current, to the agricultural economy. You have an authentic downtown that already has a number of thriving local businesses in it. You've got housing here that's an important need for Californians. So, we're going to use those assets and build on them, amplify them, both in the general plan and in the economic development element, to make sure that we are sustaining and improving a high quality of life here in Los Banos, and that we're supporting and nurturing both existing businesses and new businesses that can come to locate here. And with that, I welcome any questions or comments that you have.
Okay, are there any, Mrs. Solera?
You said over the course, by 2024, there'll be 10,000 new jobs in Merced County. Where did you, where did you get that information?
That's information that we developed as we were working on the proposal. Matt, as an economist, has access to a whole lot of data sources, including both state public data sources and also private data vendors. So, that data and most of the data that we'll be generating as we go forward is going to be from a combination of those, and that specific figure, I'm not sure if that's from the Department of Finance or maybe from one of the private data vending sources that he uses.
Okay, it's the first time that I've heard that number, so that piqued my interest. And then, this is just, I'm going to get right to the point on it. So, a general plan update, if you had to put a percentage on what, what percentage of the 2040 general plan update is the visions and goals of the city and the city council, and then what percentage of it is actually like reality? Like, does that, are you following my line of question? I mean, I know that it's like we have these big plans of where we want our community to be, what we would like to see, you know, in 2040, what it's going to look like, but then that's a lot of, you know, setting our bar really high, but then actually, like, what percentage of that do we achieve?
Sure.
You've been doing this for quite a long time, and I might say, I don't think you can get more diverse between Palo Alto and Avonale. So, you have a wide range of places you've worked. So, if you could put that in the form of a percentage, like what percentage of that is, of those dreams and goals that we have is where we want to see our city grow to versus actually getting there?
Sure. I think, I think you might be asking two separate questions, and I think one of them is, how likely is it that we'll achieve the vision that we set forth in our general plan? And the other one is kind of, how do you strike the right balance in a general plan between aspirations and, you know, reality and focus on the nitty-gritty?
That's a perfect summation of what I was trying to get out there. Thank you.
So, just to the first question, I think I will say that, you know, the past 10 years, I think, have shown all of us that we can't predict the future, particularly right now is the time when I think a lot of us are feeling a lot of uncertainty. And so, the general plan does not magically solve those kinds of problems that exist in the real world. At the same time, we're not going to solve those problems unless the city really does the work of identifying where you want to go and building consensus around that and putting it on paper so that you work towards it every day and every week, you know, in the next 10 to 20 years. So, it's, that question is a little bit hard to answer, but I think that's the best I can do. In terms of what the balance is, your general plan really needs to do both. It absolutely needs to set out a vision and a goal, and I recommend that those are broad and far-reaching and aspirational and maybe seem like at the far reach of what you might possibly attain, because you need something to inspire you and to drive your actions as a council. At the same time, your general plan needs to have both policy guidance that you're going to apply each time you meet, each time you consider a development plan, each time that your Community Economic Development Director and her staff are considering an application on a day-to-day basis, that's, those projects are going to be compared to those policies to see whether they meet up with what the city said it wanted to do. And the other important component of your general plan are going to be specific actions that you commit to. So, those are going to be things like, you know, adopt a updated stormwater management plan, or, you know, specific concrete things that the city will do that are going to be a to-do list for your staff and the departments, not just in planning, but in multiple departments, to check off. Those might be connected with your budget process or your CIP, but they're going to be kind of a checklist of to-do items. And I do recommend to all the cities we work with that that list of to-do items be tailored to the resources that you have available. So, that's one of the places where we try to connect really strongly to the reality on the ground here in Los Banos. What can you do? Oftentimes, that means making some hard choices about what can we really expect you to do, given the resources and the time that you have available over the life of the general plan. So, we try to do both.
And then, lastly, at what point in the process do you specifically engage the policymakers, you know, on specific things that, you know, I might want to see, or Miss Lewis, or the mayor would like to see, you know, in the general plan? At what point does that come into the process? Because if it's, if it's not already on the timeline, I would like to see it on the timeline, because I think there's specific things that I hear and I see that I think that we need here, and as we move forward with the general plan, I'd like to see some of those areas addressed.
Oh, absolutely. And I meant to say, when we were looking at the schedule together, that tonight, you know, I'm really just here to introduce Placeworks and our team. We're actually going to be coming back in the next few months to have a much more in-depth discussion with you and with, you know, the public to explain how the process is going to work and exactly to start having that kind of conversation about what do you want to see in the general plan? What are the key issues that are going to be most important for us to address? What are the most important outcomes you want to see us achieve at the end of this process? So, that's going to start in a much more in-depth way in just a few months from now. And we're going to continue to have those check-ins. Every orange and blue asterisk you see there is another one of those check-ins and another one of those conversations. And if, as we go along, we decide we need to have more of those conversations, then that's absolutely something that we'll talk about with Stacy and we'll make sure we make it happen.
And then, the last thing I'll leave you with is, I do appreciate... And then, the last thing I'll leave you with is, I do appreciate what I think it seems to be a pretty aggressive timeline. I know you're talking 30 months, and I love expediency in government. And so, any time that we can keep the slow wheels of government from turning any slower, and I know the, I've from, I sit on LAVCO, so I know that these things take years, and so I do really appreciate the aggressive timeline. And I know that our staff will be all hands on deck to make sure that you have the information so that you guys can meet that aggressive timeline. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me elaborate a little bit about, Mr. Silveira. Mr. Freya and I have been on this council a while, and we've been through this process. And, and all I get is someone else's vision of what Los Banos would look like. We have documents, we have papers, we have sketches of everyone's fantasy of Los Banos. And I'm not looking for Fantasyland this time. I'm looking for a realistic view of what actually Los Banos can attain, and within reason of things that we can accomplish. And in the next 30 months, I think engaging the citizens, we have a very good staff that's going to help us with, with reality this time, I think, that it's going to make sure that what we document is going to be what should go forward. Because, I mean, this is not a cheap process, we're happy to pay the money, but I think, in the past, I think it's been more Fantasyland as opposed to what actually Los Banos needs. And I'm not looking for someone's dream, I'm looking for the reality of what Los Banos can be, and how we can secure those jobs, and how we can meaningfully, meaningfully, secure those jobs. So, that would be my direction to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Freya, did you want to comment at all? Okay.
Probably clear.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, anything?
I think you stated it pretty concisely and to the point, and I would have to agree with the mayor, because I sat on the Planning Commission for many years and saw a lot of plans come through Planning Commission to the council, and some of them were very good plans and some of them weren't. But they all seemed to sit on a dusty shell somewhere, and nothing ever happened. And I don't want that to continue with Los Banos. We need to move our city forward and continue to make it a desirable place for people to live and congregate, but also be realistic that, you know, we have a certain budget that we have to work within. But we need to move our city forward and have a future for the city, because, you know, we just can't stay the way that we are, and we need to bring jobs here locally so that people can live and work in the city where they reside. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no further questions, I'd like to make the motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5905, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Placeworks for the preparation of a general plan update and accompanying EIR, and adopting a revised budget for fiscal year 1718 as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the Community and Economic Development Technical Services Account, account number 100-419-100-231, by $196,959.
Okay, do I have a second, Mr. Freya?
Did I make a quick correction?
You sure can.
It's 238, and that's on the agenda, it's stated correctly. And on the number three of the resolution, it's stated correctly, but that was a typo of the 231, and I apologize.
Okay. So, it's 196,959?
No, it's account 100-419-100-238.
238, okay. Let that be entered into the record?
Yeah, with that correction.
With that correction. Okay, Mr. Freya, a second. Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Freya, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5905. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Could we have a, could you get the council your contact information, too? Thank you. All right, let's go on to item 10. First quarter financial report for fiscal year 2017, 2018. City Council Resolution Number 5906, admitting 2017, 2018 fiscal year budget as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the Public Works Maintenance General Services Account 100-452-100-101 by $8,075, and Public Service Maintenance Park Accounts 100-451-240-101 by $1,445, $25, including Division 4 salary schedule, employee classifications relating to changes to Section G Police and Section D Informational Technology Department. And we will go to our Finance Director, Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I have for you the first quarter financial report. Back when we did the, adopted the budget, you asked to bring it back sooner than mid-year. So, here we are with the end of the first quarter. Tonight, we will be requesting one increase to the budget, as well as several changes to the salary schedule that we will go over later in the presentation. So, the first quarter financial reports is based on July 1st through September 30th. That data is too early to identify any financial trends. We haven't received property taxes, for instance. Sales tax, we've only received up until July. So, it's just too soon to tell if, if we're right in line with what we budgeted, or if we're going to be higher or lower. The beginning balances that we'll present tonight are unaudited. The audit is in progress, they will be out next week doing field work. And so, we hope to have that finished up by the end of the calendar year, and something presented to council hopefully in January or February. Tonight's budget, or the budget includes projections, carryovers, and supplemental appropriations through September 30th. And overall, revenues and expenditures are right on target with what was projected at the beginning of the budget year. So, the second column of this slide, this is the general fund summary, the second column shows what we budgeted for the fiscal year, and the third column shows where we're at year-to-date. So, as far as revenues are concerned, we budgeted 14.7 million, and we've collected 1.1 million, which is about 8%. And again, that number's low because we have only collected sales tax for one month, and we haven't collected property taxes at all, and that's our highest two, and we'll go over the top 10 revenues in a few slides. Expenditures are right on track, we expect to be generally about 25%. We're at 22%. There are some things that don't get charged out until the end of the year, and some things that are paid quarterly, and so that's why the numbers look just a little bit lower. This slide's a little hard to see, but these are our top 10 revenue sources. And the first one's sales tax, we did estimate to bring in about $4 million. We've received $481,000, and that's 12%. And like I said, that includes July, and it does actually include a portion of last year. The reason for that is we have a certain cutoff date with the auditors. If we receive money for the previous year after that date, then we have to book it in this year. So, it does include a true-up payment from the 1617 fiscal year. Property taxes, again, we estimated 3 million, we haven't received anything. Same with the in lieu of ELF, we estimate 2.5. Permits, we've, we estimate it 900,000, we've received 155,000, which is about 17%. From July to September, we've issued 329 permits. 54 of those permits were for single-family homes. So, we're a little bit lower than expected, but we plan on catching up for the remainder of the year, and we'll look at this again in mid-year. Rental land, that's something that we, I'm sorry, that we invoice on a monthly basis, and that's why we're exactly at 25%. Franchise fees, franchise fees, we get a little bit different. For PG&E and Comcast, we get them quarterly. So, we usually receive the first payment in October, and that's why we don't have anything collected. TOT works basically on the same thing, it's on a quarterly basis, and the first revenues are also collected in October. Just to remind you, the TOT, or the transient occupancy tax, is a 10% hotel tax. And, so we get our first payment in, in October, and we'll see that expected to be right at 25%. School police grants, we receive those semi-annually, so again, we're not going to see any revenues here. And then, building plan check fees, we're at 13%, that looks pretty good so far for, for the year. And then, documentary stamp tax, what that is, is it's received for the recording of sales on property or transfer of property. So, any houses that are being sold right now or transferred will receive that revenue, and we're at about 32,000 collected for the year, which is 20%. Overall, we did budget to bring in 14.7 million, and because of the way we know revenues work, we are so far on track with collecting our revenues. General fund expenditures, of course, everybody's ready to spend the money before it comes in. So, you'll see that more in line with the 25%. It does look like our operating costs are on target, personnel's at 21%, supplies and services are at 30%. Two reasons for that being a little bit higher is because we do pay the liability insurance ahead of time, and also chargeouts that we do to our internal services for like IT and fleet, those are charged out for the entire fiscal year at the beginning of the year. So, that's why that's at 30%. Capital outlay, we have a couple of projects on the books this year, and we haven't completed any or spent any money for that. From July till September, that's why we're at 0%. Debt service, we charge those out at the end of the year, and that's why we're at 0. And chargeouts, we're also doing monthly, so we're right on track with 23%. Our contingency is only there in case of an emergency, and we've spent very little. And then, transfers, transfers outwork the same way as the, the chargeouts do. So, we're relatively close to where we should be. So, overall, expenditures, we're budgeted to spend 16 million so far. At the end of September, we've spent 3.5 million, putting us at 22%. Reserve funds, so, at the beginning of the budget, we estimate where we're going to be, we haven't got everything in necessarily, and we don't know, we haven't paid all of our invoices out, and basically it's just an estimate. So, we are actually, over our estimate, by 687,000. This is an unaudited number, like I stated, the auditors will be here next week. $259,000 of that 687 are actually projects that were carried over to the next year. So, technically, it didn't get spent in this year, but it will be spent in the current year that we're working on. Some of those projects include the citywide phone system, it wasn't completed, and so the remaining cost was carried forward to the, the current budget. And then, the PAL filled restrooms, we didn't do that project either, but that project was also included in the current year budget. Other increases include increase to revenues. We did see a slight increase in property taxes, in TOTs, business license, and fines and fees. So, we have a small increase there. So, our net impact at the beginning of this meeting was $428,000. However, you just approved Stacy's item, so that subtracts out $200,000 from this number, and leaves us with $200,000 excess savings, basically. And the things that staff were looking at doing with that extra money is funding either infrastructure projects or fleet replacement that we included in our capital improvement plan, but we didn't have a funding source for. So, we'll probably be looking at that better at mid-year and maybe bringing something back to either assign the funds or actually spend the money. So, that's just a summary on the general fund. If you don't have any questions, I'll move on to Measure P. So, Measure P is, it's, it works in the same manner that the general fund does, it's a sales tax that's collected. So, we have received payment for July and then partial true-up payment for last year that we weren't allowed to put in last year's numbers. So, it's here, and that's why we're at 11%. We estimate it to bring in 1.1 million for police and fire, and to date, we've brought in 125,000. Expenditures are right on track, they're slightly higher than the 25%, but that just has to do with MDCs. PD pays for their service support contract at the beginning of the year, and fire actually worked on a big project to get new MDCs at the beginning of the year as well. Landscape and lighting districts, there's 18 districts within the city, 49% of maintenance fund, or $752,000 is the total budget. Five districts are operating with a negative fund balance, and 14 districts are budgeted to deficit spend. It's not abnormal to see them deficit spend, the whole point of these is to collect up some of the money and do bigger projects. So, they'll be either replacing park equipment, or maybe landscape equipment. So, it's normal that they're deficit spending. And then, maintenance within the city that's not in a district, that makes up 51% of the maintenance budget, or $767,000, and this is a general fund expenditure. Moving on to enterprise funds, again, we're right on track with revenues and expenditures here. We have a couple of hot months, so you'll see the water increasing, and we did take the restrictions off, so that's why we're a little bit higher than we're used to seeing. But again, it is, it is right on track, we'll take a dip in the cooler months. And again, the expenditures are a little bit lower, especially in the wastewater fund and the solid waste, and that's because we did budget capital outlay projects, and they're either currently in progress or they haven't begun yet. So, we'll pick up more expenditures as we move along. So, that's just a general summary of where the budget is. And like I stated, we don't have a lot of information to go on because it's only the first three months of the year. When we come back from mid-year, which will probably be in February, depending on when we get the property taxes, we should have more information for you and a better analysis. So, tonight, I'd really like to talk about the PERS rates. We did get in our actuaries for the fiscal year 1819, and so we know where we're going to be. And fortunately for us, it didn't come in high, as high as expected. So, that's a little bit of good news. But Kim and I talked to PERS yesterday, and they wanted to make sure that we were all aware the good news isn't going to last for a long time because they're just going to move it back up for the next year. So, overall, the rate increases are lower than anticipated. PERS actual rate of return for the 1617 year was 11.2%. So, it was higher than expected. So, that 11.2% is going to offset their estimate. So, their discount rate at that time was 7.5%. It's, if you remember correctly, over the next several years, they're decreasing it slightly. So, for the 1819 year, it drops down to 7.375. But the, the good rate of return, the 11.2%, excuse me, offsets, offsets the assumed rate of return. So, even with the good news of 11.2%, they're not planning on adjusting the phasing. They're keeping the discount rates that they talked about for the next three years, and it will eventually drop down to 7%. But if you notice, so our, our increase, if you, if you can see the numbers, I apologize, they're a little small. But the first column is miscellaneous, first tier, and our rates for the 1819 year are going to be 35.026%. And that's an increase of 3% over the current year. Miscellaneous Tier 2 is increasing by 0.6%. Miscellaneous Pepper is increasing by 0.41%. Safety, the first tier, is actually decreasing by 6%. And again, some of this has to do with the offset of the rate of return. However, back in 2003, all PERS members that had less than 100 people, 100 members in any group, had to enroll in a risk-sharing poll. And in order to do that, they basically had to fund it. And so, everybody had to pay basically for each other's share. So, if one city was more funded than another city, we had to put an even balance in it, basically, to put everybody on a level playing field, if that makes sense. So, we had what was called a side fund, and the side fund was treated as a loan. And so, I don't remember the exact amount of our loan, we've been paying it for several years, but we're paying about 200, $250,000 every year. And this year, this fiscal 1819 year, was the final payment for miscellaneous. So, that's why the rates dropped by so much. However, the warning, again, is that, and I'll show you in the next slide, that building back in that discount rate, they will go back up. Not as quickly as we had originally anticipated, but unfortunately, over the next five years, we're still going to see a large increase. So, we did pay off that 200,000. The side fund for the miscellaneous Tier 1 will be paid off the following year. So, in 1920, we'll also pay off that side fund, which will decrease our unfunded liability. And again, that's another $270,000 for that tier. So, next year, we should also see a slight decrease in miscellaneous 1, but the discount rate will bring us back up to, to our assumptions.
Sonia?
Yeah.
With all the new requirements, what's our
Sonia, with all the new requirements, what's our percent of unfunded liability? Or what's our funded?
So I have, I actually have a slide by group that we'll get to that shows our unfunded liability. The other tiers, so tier two for both miscellaneous and safety and all the peppers, they do not have side funds. So it's not something that will help decrease, decrease those rates. So it is a bit of good news there. But just to show you what we're talking about moving forward, the first graph shows the CalPERS actuarial valuation that they gave us in June 30th of 2015. That included five years' assumption of what our rate should be. So in 18-19, they're saying our normal cost would be 21.4% and our UAL was $524,000. The chart underneath that shows the new estimates that they gave us for this year. So as you can see, even though our rate dropped for the 18-19 year, you can see it consistently growing up. So if you just look at the UAL for 18-19, it goes from 524,000 to a million with this year's actuarial. That's up 200,000 over what their estimates were for last year. So even though we, and this is safety, I do apologize, I didn't say that. This is safety tier one rates. And these are their PERS estimates, not my estimates, for the next five years. So you can see just in the unfunded liability that over the next five years, they're saying it's going to increase by almost 500,000. Where just last year, they told us the increase would only be approximately 300,000. So that's what the warning is about when they say caution, your rates are dropping this year because we got such a high rate of return and you paid off this side fund, we're still going to bounce you back up. And the reason is, is when they put that discount rate in place, they did it based on what they're calling a five-year ramp-up. And this method phases in the unanticipated impact of the discount rate. So what it does is it gives you a five-year period and it tries to attempt to minimize your costs. But by doing that, they put a little bit on the first year, double it the second year, triple it the third year, and so on and so forth till they get to the fifth year. So that's why you see the, the increase ramping up so fast. So just to give you an example, when we talked about budget, we did a $50,000 assumption. Again, this is using safety tier one. And this is, if an employee made a $50,000 salary, this is what their PERS would cost us for each year. So the current budget year, we would pay, just in PERS alone, $22,000 for that employee. With the rates going down now, that employee's only going to cost us almost 19,000. And then the following year, it goes up to 20,000. By year five, you can see that we're right back and have actually exceeded where we've started. So we'll ramp right back up to 25,000. And that'll keep on carrying on unless, for some reason, the discount rate gets readjusted, which at this point in time doesn't seem likely.
Yes.
Does that take into consider, is that 50,000 is static? That doesn't take into consideration?
No, this is just based on 50,000. So you can get a clear picture of what a $50,000 employee would cost. It doesn't, it's-
Like step increases?
No.
Colas?
No. It's just a flat 50,000 and PERS only. Obviously, it doesn't take into consideration any other benefits either.
Sonia, does the city include you?
No, because the city doesn't pay that. So moving on, what the mayor was asking is each funded status of the UAL. So we're starting with miscellaneous first tier. The percentage that is funded is 68.9%. We, in dollars, that's $11,215,781. Safety first tier is funded at 71.4%. Miscellaneous second tier is funded at almost 92%. Safety second tier is funded at almost 93%. Miscellaneous pepper is 89%. Fire pepper is 93%. And police pepper is almost 90%. So the, obviously, the lower tiers have a lot less people. For instance, police pepper has seven, fire has one. So those are reasons why those are a lot higher funded than the other ones.
So do we do averaging on, to come out with the number of our, basically unfunded?
No, actually, we get a different actuarial for each one of these plans. So we could do an average if we wanted an overall. We would take an easy average based on the number of employees that we have in each plan, yes. I mean, just roughly looking at it with all the high, high 90s that we've thrown in there and then we got a couple of low ones, we're, you know, 85, I guess, is a quick estimate. But like miscellaneous first tier and fire, or I'm sorry, safety first tier have the most employees. Safety first tier is 40 and miscellaneous first tier is 62. And then even moving down to the second tier for miscellaneous, it's funded at 92%. And for us, that's actually really good because there are 35 employees in there. So they're not, we're not in a bad place. We're actually doing really good. One of the things that we've talked about, especially in the instance of safety first tier, is paying down the UAL faster. If we have a fund balance that's available and we make these UAL payments, then our rates will continue to go down. A good example is the safety first tier, like I said. So we don't have to pay the side pot anymore. But we can take that $200,000 that we're used to paying and pay it on the UAL. If we did something like that, then the next year, instead of seeing the rates go back up, we might still see a slight decrease. And you can't see it very well there, but instead of seeing the rates increase, then paying down the UAL would help us also decrease the rates. The normal rates would continue to increase, but the UAL payment, that's on that second line there, would decrease. So we would pay in less of a percentage. So it's just something that we should take into consideration. Something we did do at the beginning of the year was pay our payment at the beginning of the year, one payment, instead of making monthly payments. So that's also expected to save us interest. It's just like making your mortgage payment. If you make something ahead of time, you pay less interest in the long run. So we did that because the funding was available. We hope to continue doing that on a regular basis. And I think our estimated number was 60,000 savings? Am I totally doubling it, huh?
So you get 3.5% savings?
Yeah, she'll say 3.5% savings. You guys think I'm conservative, she's worse than I am. So we do anticipate seeing a savings there. We'll know better at the end of the year when we work out the numbers. But that is something that we do anticipate doing on an annual basis. So-
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
Sonia, explain this. Like, so let's look at miscellaneous second tier.
Okay.
That $20,323. So if we paid that, that would mean miscellaneous second tier is, is, there is no unfunded liability there.
That's correct.
Is that for all those employees or is that per employee? That's for all?
No, this is the total owed for all employees in that-
In that group.
In that group.
So if, if we, with our, if some surplus or whatever, we decide, hey, let's, let's take the low-hanging fruit in 2040, let's call it 60,000 bucks, maybe $62,000 there. So if we paid 62,000, those bottom five would be fully funded.
Yes, that's correct.
So my question is, is what does that mean back to us in savings? If we took, and just go, with every $100,000 that we paid into unfunded liabilities, what does that mean that we save in the long run? Can you, is it, is it as simple as that?
No, it's not, unfortunately, it's not as simple as that. But it, those, I'm not saying it's not good to pay them. It is good to pay them. What it's going to do is it's going to take a chunk of the percentage off of what we pay. So if you go back to that $50,000 example, for instance, the 20,000 that we're referring to miscellaneous tier two, we're paying for the UAL 0.17%. So it's going to save 0.17% of whoever's salary is in that. So if it was $50,000, it'd be 0.17% of that. So for those funds, it's very minor because they're so low. The, the better scenario is paying the ones that have a high UAL. It's just like when you have a good interest rate. If you have a 5% car rate and you have a 3% credit card rate, you might want to take your credit card and pay off your car because you pay less interest, right? So we want to take the ones that have a higher UAL and pay those down first because it's going to lower our percentage rate on those employees.
So the bigger, the better bang for your buck is to pay down the higher percentage?
Correct. Yes, because it would lower our percentage.
So in, in miscellaneous first tier or safety first tier, either one, what's the percentage that, for, for every 100,000 you put in it, what percentage would you, would that save us?
I actually think it's in our actuarial, but Kim's going to leaf through it real quick and find it for me. So, let's see here. Yeah. They, so as any good plan, it's just like a mortgage, really, only a lot more numbers go into it. They have a scenario, is this, which one do I have? So for safety first tier, just for instance, if we had amortized this over 30 years, our UAL payment is the $524,000. However, if we cut off 10 years of that, it increases our payment by 200,000. So this is actually really the opposite. I can't calculate that out based on this, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. I just, I just, I guess, moving forward, when we talk about, are there areas that if there are fund balances to where, if we're, we're making decisions, hard decisions today to, to spend that money on these unfunded liabilities, you know, what is the, what is the return on, on paying that off early? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Are we better off putting it in a savings account and letting it draw more interest than we're saving? I don't know. Those are the questions that, I think that-
Where's the-
If you can, if you can show those numbers, I think it would, you know, when you're looking at the numbers, it maybe gives counsel a better idea as to-
So that's a very good point and that's something I can bring back to you either at mid-year or sooner. I don't know that we'll be making any adjustments before mid-year. So that's a very good example. But just, for instance, we went from 773,000 amortization for UAL to 524. And that dropped, that's what dropped us our 6%, actually dropped us more than the 6% because we increased. So that's what dropped us about our 8%. And so it, for $200,000 would have a large impact for safety. This is specifically for safety. But it's a calculation that I could do out in detail for each plan and bring it back to you. But it is something, especially for safety, that I would recommend because we're used to paying that chunk and it's something that we could just continue to include in the budget. We don't have to pay it. So if we're strapped for cash, we could back off on it. But since we're used to paying it, we should go ahead and, and look into making that payment. And I'll bring those exact numbers for you back at mid-year.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry about not having that.
So basically, the percent of unfunded liability can change depending upon the category that you pay off?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. So, so the number I'm asking for is, is not a realistic number based on the information that you have right now. So maybe later on, depending upon when you, when, when you find out which ones you're going to pay down, then maybe I could, you know, find out a percentage of unfunded liability.
And these are always estimates because they're, they're based, they're based on the past.
Completely understood.
So like the information that they're using for this is 2016 and these rates aren't until the 18-19 year.
Right.
So they, they're constantly changing. Even these estimates are going to change because the actuarial doesn't include that lump payment that we made. So it'll go down by even more than that. So it's an ever-changing number. We could, yeah, we could always just bring the best assumption that we have at that time. But we'll bring Scott's information back and then yours as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. This is an action item? Do I have a motion?
Wait, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done?
I have plenty more. They all have questions, but I have more.
Well, I don't want to cut you off. Go ahead.
So our recommended changes for tonight, we did go back and take a look at the budget. Like I said, there's not a lot of information to go off of, so making any changes at this time aren't, with the exceptions that we have here, and I'll explain why these are all being recommended. We're not recommending any changes but these. And again, it's because we haven't received in any new revenues. We're, it's not our intention to cut the expenditures that we just passed in June. And so we're asking to keep everything the same with the exception of these. And the increases that we're asking for are to increase personnel expenditures in maintenance and recreation by a total of $9,500. And that's because we did have a retirement in that department that was not announced prior to the budget. And so in order to pay out the accrual cash out, which is vacation time, it's going to cost us additional funding. So we're asking to increase that budget by $9,500. A little bit of good news that we did receive is that our CFDs are anticipated to come in higher than expected. So because of that, we are used to subsidizing, the general fund subsidizes the CFDs and to the amount of over $100,000. We're asking to take that money and continue to use that money in the general fund to fund a new police officer. Even though we're at full staffing, there are unpredictable leaves of absences that the chief is dealing with. So this would be a great benefit to the police department to have another staff member there. Additionally, on the salary schedule, we would like to, if you notice on the salary schedule, it has a dispatch supervisor. There's a footnote next to that dispatch supervisor. And currently, that person, the dispatch supervisor is backfilled with the regular dispatcher. That position is vacant. So we're asking to remove that footnote, allowing us to fill that position as a dispatch supervisor position. This is not going to cost any additional money as well as the officer position because, one, we have some savings from it not being funded. And we did put in money to support a incentive pay for two people. And so we'll be using that money to also fund the supervisor. And then finally, we're asking to reclass the IT director position. Again, as you know, our IT director did announce his retirement and we're looking, as we do with any vacant position, at the structure of the department. And so we're asking that we reclass that position to a management position, a IT manager, instead of a director. And we are not asking to increase the budget for that because there will be savings that will offset the accrual cash out by moving that from a director to a manager position. So that's what's in the reso tonight. If you do choose to approve the resolution, those are the changes that will take place. And then finally, just to summarize, again, we are working on our 2016-17 financials, hoping to bring them to you in January. We will continue to analyze PERS and we'll bring back the information that was requested tonight. We are looking to fund capital improvement projects. We're hoping to do that with any savings that we might, may have, anything that's not funded in the current CIP. And then finally, at mid-year in March, we'll bring back more information for you at that time. We should know financial trends, if, if there's any increases to revenues. We'll bring back those amendments at that time as well as expenditures. And then again, if we find and do funding, funding for capital improvement projects, we might be asking to assign funds. So with that, I am now finished and I will take any questions that anybody might have.
This is a very- Sonia, I got a question. Back to the CFDs, they've come in, they've come in above what the estimates were?
Yes.
And, and so you found some savings there on the PD side? Is, how about, was there any savings to the fire side?
So the savings is combined to both PD and fire. We estimated, oh, my little chart has the total on it. Yeah, we, we adopted $499,000 in revenue for each, so almost a million dollars for each. I'm sorry, that's what we're anticipating to bring in. We estimate it 439,000 for each. So the savings is both for police and fire. And yes, we did choose to use that savings on a police officer.
So 100, so, so the, the general fund is no longer subsidizing the CFDs to the tune of about 120,000?
Correct.
Oh. Is it still subsid, is the general fund still subsidizing CFDs at all? So I guess-
There's a small, there's a small amount based on our estimate. And again, these are new estimates that we received from the people who put together our CFDs. The estimate is that we'll still be subsidizing by approximately $5,000.
$5,000.
Mm-hmm.
So I, just as a quick reminder, I know on strike team pay, we don't allow the personnel side of it because as long as, as long as the general fund is subsidizing CFDs, it wasn't fair that money raised from strike team assignments that for personnel, that it should go back to the general fund. If those are no longer being subsidized, I would like at least to have some thought to consider putting some of the personnel money into, into the money that we're making on equipment. making on equipment that helps us buy our fire trucks sooner.
So, when we get the strike team money back, it goes to whoever went. So, depending on what, if somebody was paid out of CFDs and they went on strike team, that's where the money goes back to, right now, already. We're already doing that.
There's, sometimes there is, uh, there's like admin, there's, there's in addition to, say if they...
Oh, you're talking about the additional revenue?
Exactly.
Okay, so, if you remember correctly, they had minimal additional revenue in 16, 17, but we gave them $100,000 for a vehicle. So, we gave them what they had plus more money.
Although ultimately, it is the city's responsibility to buy that new fire truck wherever the funding comes from?
That's correct, and so, we will continue to look at those numbers for you and see what we can do.
Perfect. That's all I ask, is that it's still part of the discussion. And if there are no further questions, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5906, amending the 2017-18 fiscal year budget as it pertains to increases in expenditures in the Public Works Maintenance General Services Account 10452-100-101 by 8,075, and the Public Works Maintenance Parks Account 100-451-240-101 by 1,425, including Division 4 Salary Schedule Employee Classifications relating to changes to Section G Police and Section D Information Technology Department.
Hey, do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that with the hope that the tax money, when we get the mid-year budget review, shows a little indication of the steaming economy. Hopefully, we'll benefit from, from that, and we'll have a little more money to work with. So, there's the second.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Freya, and Sonia, just cut him off next time, just tell him. Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. I meant Mr. Silveira, not Mr. Freya. Let's go on to Item 11, Consideration of Approval of City Council Resolution Number 5907, authorizing the city manager to enter into a mutual auto aid agreement for the fire protection between the County of Merced and the City of Los Banos. Chief Marison?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Los Banos and Merced County Fire Departments have had a mutual aid agreement in place since 1966. Uh, the mutual aid agreement that we have has worked very well for us. It basically lays out the ability, when one of our jurisdictions are overwhelmed by an incident, we can request the other jurisdiction to help us. If Merced County Fire Department has a large structure fire within five miles of the City of Los Banos, they can ask us for, uh, resources. It could be a variety of resources. Could be a ladder truck, a water tender, uh, in technical rescue, we can provide specialized rescue services to them. And in turn, if we have a large incident, then they can provide multiple other resources for us for a mutual aid response. That service goes back and forth without any compensation. It's worked out fantastic for 51 years. We're very pleased with it. The addition to, excuse me, I should say that the last time that plan was updated was in 1998, so we're working on a 19-year-old plan. Uh, and it works fine, it just needed to be updated. So, uh, additional component that we've added to that mutual aid plan is something called an auto aid plan, and it's, allows a dispatcher, when they hear that it is a confirmed structure fire, they can automatically request the aid from Merced County or from the City of Los Banos without having to wait to be told to do so. Our current mutual aid system requires that the incident commander respond to the incident, determine that he's gonna be overwhelmed, and then request the aid from the other jurisdiction. In this case, when a dispatcher takes the original call, if they are reporting a confirmed structure fire in a building, a commercial building, or a single-family dwelling, that dispatcher will have the ability to automatically request an engine from the providing jurisdiction. And what that will do is it will, and that's within a two-mile radius of Los Banos, that Merced County will request us to respond, and any structure fire within the city, Merced County will provide that automatically. That will cut down dramatically on the delay of having to require the incident commander to arrive on scene and then request assistance. Uh, this is something that will, I believe, help us in situations. Uh, last year, we had, the county had a very significant structure fire within a mile of our city limits, and we were requested on a mutual aid, which put our engines a few minutes behind the first arriving county engines, and unfortunately, they depleted their water source very early in the fire attack, and therefore, the structure was completely lost. We think that this automatic aid agreement will, uh, help prevent those situations from happening. The other thing that's really nice about this automatic aid agreement is multiple times a day, the amount of calls that our fire department responds to, both of our apparatus are, are assigned to incidents. We, and we experience that every day to where we have two calls at the same time. If the third call that comes down, which quite frequently does, um, if it's a structure fire and county is automatically dispatched to that fire, they very well could be the first arriving engine at that incident because we have our other engines, our other two engines committed on, on other incidents. So, this is a win-win for both of us. Uh, there is no compensation, uh, changing hands between the two departments. This is a, an aid agreement that, uh, just benefits the citizens. There is no financial benefit to it for either jurisdiction. There will be cases to where we get dispatched and within minutes be canceled because it will be, uh, determined that it is not a structure fire, a false alarm. Uh, so, our initial dispatches will increase, but I think that the benefits of having the engines there faster will far outweigh those, those false alarms. It's something that, uh, has needed to happen for a few years, and I'm, I'm glad to get this done before my final days here. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And if anyone wants to see the benefits of mutual aid on television, just look at Napa-Sonoma-Mendocino. Firefighters from all over the state came there for, for mutual aid to make sure, and if you don't understand mutual aid, just understand that, that everyone responds when there's an emergency. And now, having that benefit in, in Los Banos for the last 51 years, plus the, the added uh, security that you just outlined is absolutely phenomenal. Thank you both. Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Excuse me, if there are no further statements or added comments, I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion on this. Um, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 5907 as read by title.
Hey, do I have a second? Mrs. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just quickly make a comment?
Yes.
As chief, I do appreciate it. I think that it's something that's long overdue. When we live in a time where you have a lot of jurisdictions going to complete boundary drops, I just, it's, it's those extra minutes that save lives, um, you know, and especially in a structure fire, to have basically the closest pieces of equipment, which sometimes, it's either way. The county maybe can beat the city into a few calls, and vice versa, where this, where the county station is located versus where our city stations are located, our city engine can be, uh, the first in on that scene. So, I think it's a great thing, um, and, uh, I know the folks over at the county appreciate it too, and it's, uh, a testament to you and that relationship that you've built over the last few years with, and I remember there was a time when, we're always there when, when things happen on mutually, but there was those time when, you know, the thought wasn't to call the other, your sister agency for help. So, I appreciate everything that you've done on it, and I'm glad to see that you were able to get this done before your, in your last few days before you retire. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I will gladly second that motion.
Thank you. Motion by Lewis, second by Silveira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on. Thank you both. Uh, let's go on to Item 12, Report on Update of Business License Ordinance. Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
I'm actually going to turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Bill.
Oh, okay. We'll go with him.
I drew the short straw.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel?
Thanks, Mr. Fulton, Ms. Blackwood, for staying and persevering here. This is a short PowerPoint, 10 slides. There's the first one, the title page.
Approximately five minutes per slide.
No. Um, staff has embarked on a project to update the current business license ordinance. It's been, uh, on the books since 1974, and there's been a couple of updates to it in recent past, '96 and 2005. Just kind of fill-in updates, but there really hasn't been a comprehensive take, uh, review of the ordinance, um, since it was first adopted in 76, 74, excuse me. So, we thought it would be a good time to do that, um, at this point in time, and we also thought it would be, uh, excuse me, would be, it would be good to engage the council, um, early on in the process so that if you had any comments or insights before we get too locked into the language, that we could take those into account with the, uh, proposed ordinance that you will see hopefully in the next six to eight weeks. The stated purpose of our ordinance now is that it's a regulatory ordinance, which means it's supposedly designed to regulate businesses that are doing businesses within, um, Los Banos. There are other jurisdictions that have ordinances that are more of a taxing, uh, type, uh, ordinance where they're really just raising, it's a money-raising revenue-type ordinance. Ours is a regulatory ordinance. However, if you really dive into the ordinance itself, um, there's not much regulation going on in the ordinance. As a matter of fact, there's nothing that allows the, the city to provide conditions of approval, nothing that allows the city to take a look at a new business coming into town and make it, uh, provide for some type of regulation as to the way they conduct business, what they're doing, so on and so forth. So, when we take a look at our ordinance, even though it says it's a regulatory ordinance, it's really just a registration ordinance, which is keeping track of the businesses that are doing business within town, collecting our $75, and going on. So, what we want to do is, and the goals of this update, is to really focus in on that second bullet, which is making it more of a regulatory document. And there's a couple of keys to being able to do that. In the meantime, as part of the project too, we're gonna go through and update the language and the organization of the ordinance itself. So, but the main, the main part of our task and goal as a staff is to focus on the regulatory aspect of business licensing, which is more than just taking application, taking the $75 or whatever the, the fee is, and registering your business with the, the city. It's, uh, gonna take into account what type of business you want to be doing in the City of Los Banos, what reasonable conditions of approval should be attached to your business, taking a look at safety concerns in terms of building and fire. So, we're really gonna kind of take a run at really turning it into a regulatory ordinance. It's not gonna be a taxing ordinance or, or ordinance where we're raising revenue, but really try to come up with a comprehensive process for making sure that the, the businesses that are operating in the City of Los Banos are operating by code, operating legally, operating in a safe manner for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Los Banos.
Mr. Vaughn?
Sure.
And, and this is kind of, since, you know, a lot of things surfaced in Fresno with rental properties, and multiple-family units, single-family units, is, is that going to be part of this addition, or is there gonna be a later portion where we're gonna require inspections, uh, on a regular basis of rental units?
Um, we can include that idea into it. That idea has, we'd take a look at the Fresno ordinance as to what they did. I think they're, theirs is limited based on the number of rental units a particular business or manager has. We might want to do that. I think there are some concerns about inspecting residences, uh, personal residences where maybe it's a mom and pop that are renting their second house and have the fire department and the police department and people regularly inspecting that, but we'll take a look at whether there's something we can do in terms of the, the large property owners, apartments, multifamily-type dwellings. And we can take a look at that and incorporate something reasonable into that. Also, uh, what goes into it is whether or not the city has the resources to do that. I don't know exactly how many rentals there are in town, and how we've kept track of those. Um, so, we, we can take a look at incorporating something along those lines into the, into the proposal.
See, multiple-family units, to me, would be one owner of five or six houses, and it isn't just one single-family unit, they own more than that. And, and so, we, I, I kind of wanna, you know, we can work out the language.
Right. Typically, what I've seen is if it's four units or more, it's considered multifamily, like an apartment or a fourplex, and it might be subject to some licensing by the owner. If, right now, we are licensing the property managers, um, but we're not, and I have to take a look, and I'd have to defer to fire and building as to what type of inspection process we have going on. But we can take a look at whether or not if Bill Vaughn owns one rental in the City of Los Banos, whether he should have a, a business license, if that's a residential rental, for instance, or is there some type of, uh, different, uh, different evaluation of that if it's a commercial business that, that Bill Vaughn's renting? And if it's only one, do, do we want to have, is there a purpose for having that person apply for a business license as a landlord, I guess?
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned about the, the business license other than what we're talking about, but I'm concerned more about the safety aspect of some of these rentals and neglect, and whether it's one unit, five units, 10 units.
Yeah, I'm not so sure the City of Fresno did that in their business license process as opposed to a standalone, standalone ordinance in terms of just rental housing. So, we could take a look at that and address that one for you.
Thank you.
So, what we're looking at doing is, right now, the, the code, the business license code is in the finance title, finance portion of the, um, of the code. We're talking preliminarily about business licensing and regulation of businesses in general, having its own portion of the code. So, when I say language and organization, we're talking, we're talking about at a staff level whether it makes sense now to create, uh, a different portion of the code that consolidates all of the business-type ordinances in one area of the code. If you looked at the code now, you might find a particular business in one area of the code and another business, like taxi cabs, those types of things that we regulate, massage establishments. You might find those in totally different parts of the code, and so, from a user-friendly aspect, we thought that this might be a good time to kind of consolidate with the business licensing, uh, a new title, which would be basically business regulation, which would kind of capture all of those types of business things we got going on in the code. So, that's one of our thoughts right now. That's what this slide represents. Currently, the business license ordinance, if you saw it in your packet, it's divided into two articles, general provisions and schedule of fees. I, I didn't write the ordinance, I'm not criticizing the ordinance, but it doesn't really, it's really not organized or laid out well. It, the way it's organized doesn't really tell you in terms of the different articles what's going on. For instance, schedule of fees really doesn't talk about a schedule of fees. So, we're looking at actually reorganizing it with, with this update into a number of different parts, which are set forth in that second bullet. We think that's a reasonable, uh, reorganization of what we want to do. Gives anyone looking into the code, it gives them an idea of, geez, if I want to, what do I need to do to apply for a business license? You'd go right to the part of the, of that, that ordinance that talks about applications and renewals as opposed to which part, general provisions or schedule of fees, what do I find out about applying for a business license? So, part of what we're gonna do, and that's an easy part of what we're doing, is looking at, kind of reorganizing it, making a little bit... at, kind of reorganizing it, making it a little bit more user-friendly in terms of the content that's going to be in the ordinance. Like I said, the, the purpose of the ordinance is basically regulation in nature. And so from my reading of the ordinance, it really doesn't regulate much, if anything. And so in order to regulate, kind of our first stab at it is giving a process and coming up with the ability of the director or some commission, probably the director, the ability to condition certain categories of businesses with standard conditions. If you're a restaurant, for instance, maybe there are, and we haven't really developed these yet, but maybe there are a standard set of conditions that all restaurants in the City of Los Banos should follow. If you are a nightclub, for instance, maybe there should be a standard set of conditions that a nightclub follows. And the idea here is that we don't want to, we don't want to discourage business, but we want to have businesses that are good neighbors with the other businesses around them. And right now, if you don't have to get a planning or a building permit to do whatever you're going to do, you really don't come under the purview of the city in terms of any type of regulatory control or conditions of approval. So if you have a business that by its very nature might be bothersome to the areas around you, or cause, have adverse impacts to the areas around you, unless you come in for a building permit, or you're required to get a CUP or some other planning permit, there's really no ability for the city to interact with you and to regulate your business. So what we're proposing is that the, that the actual business license itself be the regulatory tool within which we do that. We have to be careful that we don't get into things that are already preempted by state law. We also be, need to be careful that we're not trouncing on planning, the planning process in terms of what they're doing. But I think from a regulatory standpoint, we can use this ordinance to come up with reasonable regulations for businesses by their very nature that might, even though legal and they're entitled to conduct their business, might be, might need some reasonable regulation that unless the city pronounces it, they're not going to be self-regulated. And some of the ideas we're thinking about are, you know, some of the downtown nightclubs and bars. Right now, we really don't have much regulation over them because none of them have come in for a CUP since I've been here, I don't believe. And so those types of businesses that, that might, because of their hours, the nature of their business, might need a little bit of regulatory oversight. So we're looking at using this as a tool to do that, which I don't think we have right So we're considering ways to, to basically strengthen the regulatory part of the ordinance. We're looking at ways of strengthening the inspection process to allow for regular inspections for fire and safety. We want to make sure that if you're operating a business that's inviting the public into your business, that you're a safe place for, for people to, to go, and from a fire and building standpoint. So right now, the business license code is virtually silent on those things. And so we're looking to add some language in the new, in the new proposed license code that would allow for a process for fire and building code compliance, and something that's clear when you're applying for a business license that you're subject to that. So that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do, and when I say strengthening the regulatory purpose of the ordinance. We don't want to be intruding on business, we don't want to be dictating, we don't be laying another level of bureaucracy, but on the other hand, we want, we want businesses in town that are, can coexist with other businesses next door and that are safe from a fire and safety standpoint for our community to visit. So that's kind of the idea behind that. It's going to kind of be an evolving thing, I believe, once we have the general principles set forth in the, in the ordinance. We're also looking at the implementation as to how, you know, just exactly what you're speaking of in terms of our general plan, it's nice to have these ordinances on the books, but if we don't have an implementation, implementation plan, part of this project is going to be more than just the ordinance itself, but coming up with the implement, implementation tools to make the ordinance work, from the, taking a look at the application itself, to taking a look at the categories of businesses that we have in Los Banos, looking at the categories of businesses that are high users of police and fire-type, type services, trying to find a way to regulate that so that, through conditions of approval. So the implementation of this will be ongoing, obviously, but out of the chute, we're going to try to come up with some implementation programs that we can get the, the implementation of the ordinance up and running at the same time. Also, we're going to be taking a look, obviously, at, at fees, in terms of the efforts that the city will be making and implementing and administering the ordinance as we envision it now, which is, like I keep saying, more of a regulatory tool as opposed to a registration tool. Doesn't take much to take down someone's information and contact information and what you're doing, what are you doing and where you're doing it, and checking whether they can do that in that certain zone. Not much to that, so that's why the fee is fairly low right now. We're going to be taking a look at whether or not we need to do something to strengthen those fees to actually better, better reflect the effort that's going to be made to, to regulate it. And I, I would envision the fee schedule to be based on categories of businesses. So for instance, the Walmarts of the world where an inspection could take a long time and a lot of manpower is a little bit different than the inspection of a 500-square-foot standalone office, for instance. So we're taking a look at, is there a better way to set up the categories of, of fees, business license fees, to better reflect that the service we're giving to the business itself and to the community? So it's a big project. We've already started with putting together some language. We have kind of a first draft circulating among staff. We thought this might be a good time before we kind of get those ideas concrete in terms of the staff proposals, see what city council has on their mind and what they might like to see, or any comments or questions or suggestions, such as the mayor's issue with rental, rental properties. So that's why we're here tonight. We don't have a, a document for you to review or look at at this point. We just are looking for any comments so that we can take those into account before you get the document.
Mr. Frey, you were first?
First, I assume in the application we done through open counter? Will they route it through that?
Well, unfortunately, open counter, I don't believe, covers business licensing. And what I've been told is our business licensing software is through Springbrook, is that true? And that it's a difficult interface, at least for the input. So we're, that might be one of the things that staff would be looking at, is a different way to, to administer the business licensing itself.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that would be, if we run it all through one system.
So right now, I think it's just all by mail and paper and over the counter, correct?
And then I like, especially for small businesses, I like keeping those fees low. I like to encourage people to start businesses. Big corporate enterprises, they're capitalized and they're.
Well, it truly is not a revenue-generating endeavor, it's a cost-recovery endeavor. So what we're trying to do is not have the smaller businesses that maybe don't need the type of interface subsidize the larger businesses that, that take up our time.
Exactly.
So we're going to evaluate that, analyze that, and see if we can come up with a, a way to administer the fees in a, in a more fair manner.
Thanks.
I will say our fees are probably the lowest in the valley, which means we haven't looked at them in a while, but we haven't been doing a lot to administer the ordinance either.
There's not that much revenue being generated from them anyway, so.
No. It's, it's a, basically, right now, it's just a cost-recovery type thing.
I'm good with it.
Mr. Silver?
Yeah, a couple questions or comments, both. I read in the ordinance, the current ordinance, that the fees are supposed to be adjusted based upon the Bay Area Consumer Price Index listed.
Yeah, we're not going to do that.
Have, have we done that? Have we been doing that?
I don't know if we've done that. I don't believe we have.
Okay, and then, so the next question, does Walmart pay the same for a business license as, pick something?
Yes.
The mayor's frame shop?
Yes.
Right, and if you, so, so those two businesses both pay seventy-five dollars for a business license?
They do, but then it depends on other add-ins. So if they sell alcohol, then that's another add-on, but Walmart could say, could, their business license could be the same price as Town and Country Liquor, for instance. Yes.
So that's definitely something to look into.
I don't sell alcohol.
I know, I know. So, the next, the next thing that I, I want to, while you're considering all these things, is to, at least from my point of view, is look at how we're going to enforce it. Is, you know, are we, I would like something that's actually enforceable versus coming up with a bunch of things and then having no way to be able to keep up with the enforcement. That's something that would be important to me.
So of course, that's an issue, and if you, I don't want to speak for the chief, but the chief likes to have the tools and his, and his tool belt to enforce. I don't know how active we can be in terms of enforcing conditions of approval, but if you don't have the tools to begin with, you can't, there's nothing to enforce. So if we, for instance, have conditions of approval, which would be the big enforcement part of this, of this ordinance, we'll have those tools in place, and I think those are fairly easy to enforce.
Okay. And then, since you're talking about, you know, fees, you know, we're not trying to raise money on this, we're just trying to do cost recovery, something that's been brought to my attention, and I would like, and I don't know if this is the proper time, but we talked about like doing fire inspection fees and, and, you know, having to go out and inspect this stuff, is, is there a, a part of our fee structure when it comes to these inspections? And again, I don't know if this is the exact right time, but is it one rate and then it's unlimited inspections? Because if that's the case.
I think in talking to the fire chief, there's been an issue with callbacks, numerous callbacks that are not paid for. So if they find a problem, and they got to go back numerous times to check that problem off.
So if, if that's the case, if it can't be addressed in, in, when we're looking at this, I would, I would like that to be addressed. I don't think that we should reward bad behavior, right? If it, you know, there's a reasonable amount that you go out and you do an inspection, okay, there's a couple of things that have to be checked into, but if you're having to go out there time after time after time, that, that's burn of man hours.
Well, we discovered in taking a look at the ordinance that there is no revocation process. So that, that's, we were hoping that that will be a big tool in compliance, is revocating the business license, revoking the business license, and then that's when you get people's attention. So if we're doing these inspections over and over because no one's taking them seriously, at some point, you're going to get a, a letter in the mail that says your business is going to be closed in ten days and your license is going to be revoked. So those are the types of tools we want to have. And again, we just want it to be a process where we're reasonably regulating businesses and that we're doing it in a manner that's economical for everybody to understand, no one likes to pay fees.
Absolutely. And I think, I think that, talking about looking at fees based upon, for lack of better words, the level of use or the, the level of intensity with that business, that's something that we should be doing. I don't, you know, the little mom-and-pop shop on the corner that needs a basic business license, you know, meets all the requirements, that just, it's really hard that, you know, they're, Walmart's paying this, and I don't mean to be picking on Walmart, I'll say Target this time, is paying the same price as, as they are, so.
It really is dependent on the intensity of the business and what they're doing. So for us, we're going to try not to reinvent the wheel. I'm sure there are cities out there that have categories of businesses where they're doing this, and we're going to try to draw upon that.
And then, that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope that.
Okay. And I want that same rule implied, so people have a decent place to live. That's, that's all I'm asking for. Okay, any other questions? Hey, you have direction?
I do.
All right, thank you. Let's go on to advisement of public notices, and there is no report. So now we're going to go to city manager's report. Girazis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of reports in regard to executive compensation. On October eighteenth, twenty seventeen, based on my performance review, the finance director's monthly, monthly salary was increased to ten thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars, or one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars annually. That will be retroactive to May sixteenth, twenty seventeen. And secondly, on October sixteenth, twenty seventeen, based upon entering into an employment agreement with the new fire chief, monthly salary was set to ten thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars a month, or one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars annually, effective October twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen. So that is the executive compensation portion of my report. Did want to remind folks that tomorrow night is National Night Out, the Police Department's National Night Out in Pacheco Park, so hope to see a lot of you out there. Then lastly, Tim, Chief Marison, did want to take an opportunity to thank you for your service. Actually, I just realized this is your last council meeting, so an important night for us as a community, I think probably an important night for you and your career. I've only known you a little over a year, but I've been incredibly impressed by your professionalism, your dedication to the community, your service to the community, and your dedication of the profession. So just personally, want to thank you for your service. It's been my pleasure to work with you for this short period of time, and good luck in your, in your retirement. So thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's go on to city council member reports, item fifteen, and we'll start with Mrs. Santos, she's not here, so we'll go to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, well, I'll start off with Blaze Pizza, had a successful opening, what was it, Friday before last, I believe it was? And on that particular Friday, they served pizza for free to the entire community, and by nine o'clock that evening, they had served over twelve hundred pizzas to the community. The owners indicated that this was their fourteenth franchise that they'd opened in the state of California, so I want to wish them great success. Their pizzas are really excellent, so if you haven't gone to Blaze yet, please go over and try it, you'll be quite surprised. October thirty-first, there will be a Harvest Fun Fest from five-thirty to eight PM at eight-twenty-one West L Street, and this is a community event to bring your children out for fun games and raffle. There'll be bicycles raffled off and some other nice items, and lots of candy for the children. So it's a great place and safe for families and children. Please bring your, your children out on that particular night. And our city managers already made the announcement about the National Night Out, and it will be held from five to seven PM at Pacheco Park. I want to thank the Los Banos Fire Department for their continued effort in honoring breast cancer awareness. And this disease doesn't just affect women, it affects men as well. And I want, I'm very happy and excited to know that the monies that were raised this year are going to stay in Los Banos to help Los Banos residents. And I hope that that effort will continue and that the monies that are raised will stay here at home, because there are people who need just a little bit of boost and help to get over the hump, maybe to get, you know, have somebody take them to their treatment or whatever the case may be. But thank you for your dedication, for getting those shirts out to the community. I was really happy to hear the increase in numbers of shirts that were sold this year over last, and I'm sure the community is going to continue to purchase them. I, I see people in various walks of life. I see people in various walks of life and professions wearing these shirts in the community, so it's a good thing that you've been doing. Thank you so much. Chief Marison, as our city manager said, this is your last night, and the last night that I'll see you sitting in that chair. I want to let you know personally, I think you've done a great job as a fire chief in the time that you've been the fire chief. I'm going to miss seeing you there, and I also want to wish you much happiness and time in your retirement. I know that you're not going to be disconnected from the firefighting world altogether, but you have done an incredible job, and I have been very happy to work with you as a council member alongside with you. And thank you again for your dedication and time served. And we'll welcome our new fire chief, and he'll be sitting in that chair at our next council meeting, the 1st of November. Thank you again. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to report tonight, other than I do want to say, Tim, congratulations on your retirement. Just a consummate professional, I always appreciate your candor, your honesty, your dedication to the fire service, your dedication to the citizens of Los Angeles, always striving to make your department better than what it is, always, it just, everything about you, I'm saddened to see you go. And to our pretty soon-to-be new fire chief, you've got some pretty big shoes to fill there, buddy, so I wish you all the luck in that. And, you know, and I do appreciate our department and how it works, and that we have homegrown talent, and I think that it's, you know, it's a testament when you look at all the guys in the fire service and the years that they put in, and being such a small department, there is not a whole lot of room for opportunity to promote, but these guys are dedicated to Los Angeles, to the citizens of Los Angeles, and that's a testament to the chief before you, you now, Chief Marison, and you soon-to-be chief early. So again, congratulations to both of you for your paths now in life, and I do look forward to working with you both and keeping in contact with you, Chief Marison. So thank you and congratulations.
Good. Let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Congratulations on your retirement, Tim. Congratulations on your appointment, Mason. I've known you both for a long time, it's an absolute pleasure and an honor. Our town has served well in your hands, and you guys do represent the best, as Los Angeles always does. It's a great city, and I'm looking forward to seeing you around, seeing some more posts on, I imagine you'll be getting a little more hunting and fishing time and more time with the grandkids, which is the gold. So thank you much for your service. Happy birthday to my granddaughter, she'll be two, Adelina. They grow so, so fast, so fast. And that's about it for tonight. I have to miss tomorrow night on the night out. I like to go to the police night out, but I can't be there, my choir's performing in Fresno tomorrow, so we won't be back in time. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Okay. Tomorrow night, they're having a Small Works of Art, it's a fundraiser for the library, so if they still have tickets left, you can obtain those and probably at the door, I'm not quite sure, I don't have the contact number, but that's always a great event for the library to raise money. National Night Out, I will be there tomorrow night, and thank you so much, Fire and Police, for putting that on. It's a, it's a great community get-together. We need to have those things, we need to have more of them, and it's good for the people to see our departments in many different ways. November 1st, Mason, they're going to pin you with his badge. So looking forward to coming to that. Fire Department fundraiser for a number of years, thank you for raising that money. It's absolutely imperative that we fight all types of cancer, but you have chosen breast cancer and a very, very important aspect of life for females, and mostly females, and some males. But thank you so much for raising that money. It shows community spirit, it shows the effort that our employees go above and beyond to see that everyone has a quality of life that they deserve in some way by contributing the way you do. Thank you. Tim, what can I say? Known each other for so many decades, and it's nice that you're able to retire. And I wish you so much happiness with your wife and your grandkids. So continue to visit us, please. I know you will, because you helped build that smoker over there for the chicken. And so that's not going to go to waste. And yeah, and my grandson's nine years old, huh? So, yeah, is it eight or nine? Nine, okay. Nine today. So happy birthday, Liam. So with that, or is it Evan? No, it's Liam. Okay, okay, I got it right. Okay. So with that, we are going to go into closed session, and it is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property located at 1111 G Street, Los Angeles, California, APN 026161003, 026161008, a portion, approximately 6.4 acres. City negotiator, city manager, Taurasus, city attorney, Vaughn, city director, finance director, Williams, police chief, Breezy, negotiating parties, Sam Watson, under negotiation, purchase price, and terms of sale. If there's anything to report, we will do so when we return. Have a nice evening.